Good evening. Welcome to the September 5, 2023 City Council meeting. The meeting is hereby called to order. Members of the public may attend this City Council meeting in person or may watch and listen remotely by viewing the meeting on Channel 8 WCTV and at the city's website at www.yzeta.org/wctv. Public comment during the public forum and/or public hearing portions of the meeting may be provided in person at the meeting, in advance, or by logging into the Zoom call and raising your hand during the public hearing. When your name is called in the meeting, you will be seen and heard in our council chambers and the cable channel. You will be asked to unmute, and then you may begin your comment. All public comments must include your full name and address. Second item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask everyone to please stand and follow along if they are so able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Third item on the agenda for this evening is the roll call. Please note that all members of the council are present. I'd also like to inform the public that the council did participate in a workshop this evening, and in that workshop, we reviewed and discussed an update of Clappbridge Park preliminary design and next steps, a discussion of the 2024 preliminary enterprise budgets and fee schedule, and a discussion of the 2024 preliminary general fund budget and property tax levy. All right, so moving on this evening's agenda, our next item is to approve the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as is, or would anyone like to make any changes?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
To approve the agenda?
Yes.
Excellent. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Next item this evening is the public forum. As a reminder, for those members of the public in attendance this evening who are interested in speaking, we ask that you please state your name, address, and indicate if you are representing a group. We also ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. If the item you wish to speak about is something that is on the agenda, for those that are in person, we ask that you please fill out one of the forms at the table at the back of the room and hand it to staff. For those that are watching via Zoom, please send a note via chat to staff and let them know what agenda item you would like to speak about. We also require that your camera is turned on when you speak. We have a couple of items scheduled for the public forum this evening. Our first is an introduction and update of interfaith outreach activities by Executive Director Kevin Ward. Ms. Jaeger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to invite Executive Director Kevin Ward to the podium to provide an update to the council.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Kevin Ward. I'm the Executive Director of Interfaith Outreach and Community Partners, infinitely known as IOCP. We're located at 101 and 6th. I don't know the actual address, but the corner of 101 and 6th. Forty-four years ago, in the basement of St. Bart's, some committed community members saw needs in the community and came together and created our organization. And the whole idea was, how do we have a coordinated effort in responding to some of the needs that were showing up at many of the faith communities in this community? And when I first heard about IOCP and its history, I said, why would you start a social service organization in Yzeta, Minnesota? What is the need? What is the purpose of the organization? Because if you ride around, I don't see need. So what is the true purpose of it? Well, what I learned is suburban poverty is hidden. Oftentimes, you won't see it. It's in the cracks. It's not like going down to Minneapolis where you see people in encampments. Here, it's more hidden. They can't really afford their current lifestyle and living. So I've been, I've had the privilege of being the Executive Director for two and a half years. It'll be three years in December, and I just want to give you a quick update on what we've been up to. If you notice on the presentation, you can go to the next slide, we've put together a strategic plan over the next five years, and it's three to five years we're going to extend it past the three to the five. And the thing to note here is we've decided to put the client in the middle, to become more client-centric in how we deliver our services, supported by our donors, partners, volunteers, and staff. And we've decided to do deep dives in those other areas of technology, core services, resources, and information and communication. What does this mean? There's been a shift that most of the time in social service organizations, you're coming for a need, and you're not treated like a consumer. You're treated as if, oh, here, have this. We're flipping it on its head and saying, you deserve, although you have a need, you deserve to have a great experience. And your current situation does not define you, and we want to make sure that you have a positive experience. We want to make sure that our mission is to do two things: meet basic needs and provide ongoing stability so families don't have to come back to us, but they can afford the life that they currently live. What does that mean for Yzeta? We, in our service area, and you can go to the next slide, in our service area, I'll talk about in one second, but the way that we've become client-centered, those top four, integrity, inclusion, and collaboration, those are our core values of the organization. And the way that we're going to measure ourselves and how we define if we're client-centered or client-centric or not is that middle: our approach, dignity, accessibility, and agility. And the blue bottoms at the bottom, that's the infrastructure that has to be in place that allows us to have these four principles consistent across the organization. So it won't matter where you enter the organization, your experience will be the same because we are constantly working on our approach, dignity, accessibility, and agility. Next slide. What does that mean for Yzeta? Here's our service area. And did you know of the 1,550 families, which is about 4,000 individuals that we served last fiscal year, 11% of those came directly from Yzeta? Almost 170 came directly from this community of Yzeta. 70% comes from Plymouth, and then the rest of them are kind of spread throughout Medina, Heimel, Orno, and Long Lake. The need is certainly here, although you may not see it. We see it every single day. And then I'll close with this: as we've done a deep dive in trying to understand where the needs are in the community, there's three areas that we need to focus on. One is housing. Did you know currently, right now, here are the locations in which are properties that we own and we service with services within this community? And these are affordable units right here in this community. And we're always looking for ways to expand and extend this, but these are the areas that we started. Where Maggie I is, was our original building that we tore down and built those townhomes. Maggie I, the top left. And then Maggie II is a recent unit that was purchased. And then you have the Boulevard Apartments, which is right across from the church on the corner there. And then you have the two other units on Gleason. Three areas: affordable housing, mental health, and transportation are the areas in which we will focus. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ward. Questions?
I would like to thank you, your new, newer in your role, and we had an opportunity to meet, I believe it was last year, and you had some very big shoes to fill after La Donahoy retired after many years of service, who was one of the founding organizers of Interfaith Outreach and Community Partners. But I would like to thank you. Thank you for the work that you do, not just for Yzeta, but for the surrounding communities, the investment that you've made in our residents, and by providing that very much-needed housing, that dignity, those services for people of all ages from, not just within our borders in Yzeta, but throughout the community as a whole. There are many conversations that I have with individuals who are having difficult times. There is, as you mentioned, the need is not readily visible for many of the people that live in town, and we're not going to fool ourselves. We are a very fortunate community, and we are very blessed. But not everybody is in the same situation, and by having an organization such as Interfaith Outreach and Community Partners have services available, that I know that when they pick up my phone and they're struggling, and I say, you know, there's nothing that I can personally do or as a city that we can do, but here are some partners of ours, and I could say, you know what, call IOCP. They will be there, they will help you, and I know that they are in good hands. So for that, I thank you, because we certainly couldn't do it without your assistance and the many generous donors that help support the organization. We have many people who live in town who also serve on your board, and everyone is just so passionate about the work and the services that you provide. If people were interested in donating to Interfaith Outreach, how would they go about doing that?
Yep, you can donate online, www.iocp.org is the place where you can donate online. Again, we're at 101 and 6th. Feel free to stop by. And if you have an opportunity where you want myself or someone to come out and speak to a group or a company or an organization to tell the story, we're always available for that, too.
I appreciate it. It's a great resale shop, too.
Yeah, it is.
It's wonderful.
Thank you for having me.
Absolutely. Thank you so very much.
Again, just such a wonderful organization and so very proud that they started here within our borders. All right, our next presenter this evening is from the Yzeta School District. We have a presentation of the proposed 10-year $5.7 million technology levy for the Yzeta School District. And it appears that Superintendent Chase Anderson is here. Good evening. And it looks like we also have Executive Director of Finance and Operations, DeeDee Karing. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members for giving us an opportunity to be here this evening. We have a video that we're hoping to be able to play here momentarily, and it outlines some details about a levy renewal that we're bringing to the voters on November 7th. We also have a school board election, and I would encourage all listeners to become engaged with that, to learn about our candidates, and also to learn about this levy renewal that we're bringing forward to the community as well. So the school district has two technology levies currently. One expires in fiscal year '25 and the other in fiscal year '29. And the district also has a general operating levy, but we're not speaking about that tonight because that is not the one that is coming up for renewal. But I think the information in the video will be very helpful to provide the background details. And following the showing of the video, our Executive Director of Finance and Operations, DeeDee Karing, and I would be happy to field any questions that you might have. So if we could have the video, please.
Hi, I'm Chase Anderson. I'm proud to be superintendent of one of the most highly-regarded school districts in the state. Yzeta has a long history of providing excellence for each and every student that makes us a district of choice for families. On November 7th, Yzeta School District residents will be asked to renew one of the district's technology levies. This funding is essential to maintaining our tradition of excellence. We are grateful for the strong community support we have received over the years. Results of a recent survey of Yzeta Public Schools residents indicate broad support for technology and for the district. 86% say technology for students is essential or very important. 97% say our schools are a good value for the investment. 95% rate the quality of our schools as excellent or good. And 92% say the quality of our schools increases home values.
A technology levy, also known as a capital project levy, is a locally-approved source of funding. These funds must be dedicated for technology-related needs, including student iPads and staff computers, educational software and interactive classroom equipment, district communication tools and security systems, essential technology training and support for students and staff. The state of Minnesota does not dedicate funds for technology in our schools. Districts must rely on voter-approved levies. Thanks to strong community support, Yzeta Public Schools currently has two technology levies in place. One of the district's two technology levies is set to expire after taxes payable in 2025. The request is for a 10-year technology levy of $5.7 million per year, beginning with taxes payable in 2026. There is no tax increase if voters approve the levy, because it is a renewal of an existing locally-approved levy. The funding is essential to maintaining our tradition of academic excellence.
Technology is essential. It allows students to learn at their own pace and enables teachers to personalize learning for students. Renewing this 10-year technology levy will enable us to replace aging classroom technology equipment and student devices, maintain the technology support that staff and students rely on every day in our schools, and keep students and staff safe through cyber and physical security. In summary, we rely on technology levy funding to provide a personalized education, updated access to educational resources, and expert staff to keep technology current and working for our users. Renewing the technology levy will allow us to replace aging classroom technology equipment and student devices, invest in safety and security, and maintain essential technology support for students and staff. If the levy expires, we cannot replace aging classroom and technology equipment and student devices, maintain the current level of technology support for our students and our staff, or keep our data and technology systems safe and secure. I encourage all residents to learn more about the technology levy renewal and be sure to vote early or on November 7th. We welcome your questions. Please visit our website, send an email, or give us a call.
So hopefully, the video was able to give a good overview. Seems kind of strange to be here live and also watch myself in video, but anyway. Two for the price of one, so to speak, I guess, tonight, or four for the price of two. But we really do thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and to just take a few moments. And also, I just want to really emphasize how much we appreciate the relationship that we have with the city of Yzeta and the other city governments that are part of our school district. We appreciate the partnerships and working collaboratively on a number of projects with the work that you do as council members and as the mayor and also the staff for the city of Yzeta. So with that, if you have any questions for DeeDee and myself, we'd be happy to respond to those at the current time.
Very good. Thank you. Questions? Yes, Alex?
Yes, I've got one. There was one point in the video, I was a little surprised when it said that voting for this would not increase taxes because that number has been in there and it's just a renewal. So is the $5.7 million per year the same as it has been for the past period of time?
Yeah, great question. So it is indexed against the net tax capacity. So as the community's net tax capacity within the district goes up, it goes up, but it levels that off amongst all taxpayers at the same rate. So it does keep it flat, and it does increase every year, but also the tax base increases every year, so absorbs that cost. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, thank you.
Okay, sure.
So I think, are there other questions? No? So we're in full budget season, much like you are.
You are.
And part of the discussions that we have every year with our residents, and even though you bear our name, we are but a very small percentage of voters. So probably the biggest shock to people when they get their tax statement, they always look to us and they get upset with us, right, about how much their property tax bill is going to be every year? However, we do share with them that actually the highest percentage is actually paid to the schools. And so we have this one levy. Can you break down all of the levies that you ask taxpayers and that the taxpayers have approved and are paying?
Sure.
We have this one, which is $5.7 million.
Right. And then... There is a second, there is a second tech levy. That's about the same amount. And we have an operating referenda, which voters have approved for as well, which is about $2,000 per student. And then we have the bond referendas, so the bonds to build the new buildings. Those are the voter-approved levies, and certainly there are some other levies that are dictated by the state of Minnesota that used to be state aid and no longer are and have been changed over to tax levies as well. So we have a whole host of different levies within our system. I would say the operating referenda that voters approved, the tax levy for bonds is voter-approved, and the capital project are the largest. We also have one called the long-term facility maintenance, which takes care of all of the assets, all of our school buildings, and making sure that they're in the proper fashion for our, you know, much grateful for all the support from the community to build the new buildings that we have for our school district. And I can appreciate Yzeta is a smaller community, so it does feel like it's a bigger portion of that. Just know that our tax levy has been pretty small increase over time. We do, we're very conscientious of that, and try to keep the levy at, you know, around that 2% to 3%. So we, and we do have an opportunity to kind of maintain that percent. I can't guarantee, because, as you know, we're getting information into the state right now for our levy certification.
Okay. In terms of, aside from levies, there have been a lot of changes within the school district, a lot of changes that have impacted our ability to partner with the school district and participation from the school in different events, which kind of takes away from what Yzeta was always, has always been about, which is small-town feel. So having high school band come to having a homecoming parade and all of those things that have really gone away. Can you talk a little bit about how can we reestablish those connections? We don't want to just give out our name, right? We want that connection with the students. We appreciate the amazing work that they do, both academically and with their sports, and yet it feels like they're pulling away. And we want them to have that connection to family, community, citizen government, and their school as well. So how do we reestablish those connections? Because I feel like once we start to lose that, we start to lose the character and the foundation of what our very essence has always been about.
Sure. Thank you for the question and the comment, Mayor. We certainly value the connections that we have, not only with Yzeta, but all of our communities that make up and comprise the footprint of the school district. As we've grown, which is certainly a well-known set of circumstances for us, I think we've grown in the 15 years that I've been here, from about 9,500 students to close to 12,500. So we've continued to expand and build new schools and increase in size. I'm always open to having conversations and communications about how we can strengthen our partnership and our relationship. I know that there was some recent strengthening with our community education program and offering opportunities through the school district and through community ed, working in tandem with the city of Yzeta, and in regard to events such as homecoming parades and, I don't know if there were others, but I know that that was certainly a longstanding tradition. I think some of the logistical challenges, both for the school district and perhaps the city, caused us to take another look at it. And I think also, just post-pandemic and during the pandemic, I think a lot of traditions were reevaluated and/or delayed or paused because so many things couldn't be done. So I'm always open to having more conversations about how we can continue to foster those relationships and ensure we have activities that help all of our communities feel involved and included.
Absolutely. Yeah, as you mentioned, with the size of the schools, just getting to be where they are, having, maintaining that core sense of place and connection, I think, is that much more valuable. So thank you for being open to that, and we'll definitely find out, you know, different opportunities where we can do that and celebrate, you know, the wonderful work that all of the students are doing. And they represent us so well. So we are so very proud to have them as a part of it.
Thank you. We're proud of them, too, and they started the school year today. It's probably, most in the audience here know it tonight.
That's right.
We had a great first day.
Yes. And before we wrap up, anything else from the council? Yes, Alex?
Yes, something you said, Madam Mayor, sparked my interest a little bit, which is that the state legislature just passed a budget where they spent $17 billion of tax surplus and then raised taxes on top of that, another $10 billion. So basically, $27 billion in play there. And I'm wondering, did any of that money get to you?
Do you want to speak to the package that was...
Sure. Thanks for the question. And I'm not familiar with the $10 billion on top of that. I'm very familiar with the $17 billion surplus that they had, and I'll rest assured, all of that did not go to school districts. So school districts received an additional 4% on the funding formula, so that is a key factor in calculating our revenue. That means on a per pupil basis, we got a 4% increase. Keep in mind, our expenses for gas and bus drivers and transportation have gone up way more than 4%, but this was the largest percent increase we've had for quite a while. And then in the second year, 2.5%. And on top of this, something that school districts have been asking for for a long time is something called special education excess cost aid and increasing that. So if I'm a special education student needing services, there are additional costs to educate those services, and we've only been getting 50% of the... And we've only been getting 50% of those costs from the state of Minnesota, and they bumped that up. So that's some additional, about $4 million to our school district, and we're super grateful to all school districts across the state. There were some other smaller levies as well. In the future, they will be indexing that funding formula to a CPI, but it will be, the floor will be 2%, and the high will be 3%. They could go more than that. So we're really limited on the dollars that we get, and so then, we have to manage, how do we take care of all those expenses where the inflation is higher than that? The other thing that I will say they gave us will be that now, we have to pay for unemployment for employees that work a nine-month job, excluding teachers. So we're monitoring that and looking at that. There is some funds from the state to help pay for that in the first year, maybe some in the second, but when those funds run out, then it falls back onto the school district to absolve those costs. Our initial calculation on that was about a little over $1 million a year to pay for those additional costs. So those are some of the highlights. There were some other categorical aid, which relates to specific programs where we have to spend money. Does that help, sir?
Yes, it does. Very complex issue, and thank you for that.
It is. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So the parting words are vote on November 7th.
That's correct. You took the words out of my mouth. So thank you so much. We really appreciate the time.
Thank you so much. Yes, good luck with the school year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We are still in the public forum. Ms. Yeager, do we have anybody else who wishes to speak in the public forum this evening?
I don't have anyone on Zoom, and I haven't received any other slips at this time.
Very good. Thank you. Then we will move on to our next agenda item, and that is an opportunity for the council who would like to bring up an item for future discussion. Anything?
Nothing.
Okay. And we will move on to the consent agenda. I will read through the list. We have quite a few items here. On the consent agenda, there is one item, however, that we are going to pull and not consider. I will not be part of our vote this evening, and that is item H. Thank you, Councilmember Plekish. So we will revisit item H, which is the second reading and adoption of ordinance 827, amending City Code Section 311 and the city policy pertaining to both slips at a later date. We have some administrative work to do there. Yes?
Just a question for city attorney Shelz. Do you need an official motion from the council? Anything more than that direction?
Madam Mayor, no. If it's pulled from the consent agenda and you don't take action on it, then the, you know, the current movement of that ordinance will fail, and we won't have that particular draft. The only thing, I think staff has clear enough direction from council on this one, so you could make a formal motion to direct staff to work on that, but I think it's clear enough. So if you just remove it from the agenda, the ordinance in its current form won't go forward.
Fantastic. All right. I will read through the items then. And at the conclusion, I will ask if anybody has any questions or wishes to pull an item for further discussion. All right, on this evening's consent agenda, we have the following items. Approval of the city council workshop and regular meeting minutes of August 8, 2023. Approval of the check register. Approval of municipal licenses. Receipt of police activity report. Receipt of the building activity report. Approval of second reading and adoption of ordinance 828, regulating the sale of edible cannabinoid products low potency. Approval of second reading and adoption of ordinance 829, amending chapters 309 and 714 of Wayzata City Code related to use of cannabis products and tobacco in public parks and places. Approval of resolution 46-2023, accepting donation from Wayzata Alliance Club. Adoption of resolution 39-2023, approving grant agreement for funding a Wayzata DWI and traffic safety officer for federal fiscal year 2024. Approval of professional services agreement with WSB for design and construction services related to the dredging of the Wayzata Marina. Approval of professional services agreement with WSB for design services related to the 2024 water meter replacement project. Approval of 2024 fire protection agreement with the city of Woodland. And lastly, receipt of the 2023 second quarter financial report. Council, any questions for any of those items, or would you like to pull an item for further discussion? Alex?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item, let's see, or two, or excuse me, the consent agenda, item F, approval of second reading and adoption of ordinance, it's like 828, regulating the sale of edible cannabinoid products. I'd like to pull that for separate discussion.
Okay, very good. Anybody else have any other items?
I have one, Mayor.
Yes.
Number 11, and I just actually have a question for Mike Kelly.
Sorry, 11?
11. Or? It's L.
L, L, yes. Okay, so that's the water meter replacement project.
Yes.
So you have a question for Director Kelly?
Yes.
Well, he's not at a microphone. Let's go ahead and start with Alex's question.
Fine.
And then we can get set up.
Madam Mayor, it wasn't a question. I'd like to pull it for separate discussion, pull it from the consent agenda.
Okay. What's the nature of the conversation?
Well, there's some things in here, I think, need to go on public record. I had here registration requirement. There's a section in there that implies that certain establishments can sell it, and I think that's worthy of a discussion.
Okay.
There is also an item in here that talks about fines for people that do things other than sell it, and I'd be curious to know what that is all about. So there are a few things in here, I think, that we just need to talk about.
Okay. Are these all items that require a legal analysis by the city attorney? Or is that, are these policy decisions? Because I don't want to put anybody in a difficult situation where they have to?
Well, I'm not comfortable.
Provide a legal opinion.
I'm not comfortable in voting on it as a part of the consent agenda. And whether there are legal questions in this or not, I don't know.
Okay.
That will come out in our discussion.
Okay. Well, I'd like to be part of that conversation, however, as I mentioned earlier, I may have to excuse myself early. So let's go ahead and get Director Kelly and get your question from Councilmember Iverson.
Thank you, Mayor. My really simple question. So in the contract with WSB, we're looking at a three-year phase to replace the water meters, and it says up to 1,200. My question is, when we complete the 1,200 replacements, is everything in the city complete at that time?
Madam Mayor and council, over the last several years, somewhere between 10 and 20, we've replaced about a third of our meters. We have some, about 2/3 of our meters to replace. So there's about 600 that have been done over various times. Following the three-year replacement that we have planned, all of our meters will have been updated to newer technology. Sometime in the next 15 to 20, we will need to replace them again. So the plan is, this phase will replace about 2/3, about 1/3 have been replaced. They will be new technology, if that answers your question.
Yep. That's perfect. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't an outstanding number remaining, but that's going to be for a different council if it's 15 years from now.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. So here's what I'd like to propose. We've already polled item H. That is not for consideration this evening. We had item L, those questions addressed. Councilmember Plekish would like to pull item F. So I would like to, in a motion, if there are no other questions about the consent agenda, to approve items A through E, G, I, J, K, L, M, and N from the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, that motion passes. So my next item, then, I'd like to do is, before I move on to the public hearing, let's go ahead and tackle the approval of the building, or no, approval of the second reading and adoption of ordinance 828, regulating the sale of edible cannabinoid products low potency, per Councilmember Plekish's request.
Okay. Hopefully, this won't be very long, but one of the questions, one of the lead-ins to our packet was that the city attorney would look into if the city can limit who sells edibles to only the muni. And that, considering that, I personally don't think we should be selling it at all, but apparently, we don't have that option. So my thought was that we should then limit it to only the muni. That was discussion, it wasn't a policy directive at that point. But the city attorney was going to look into what are the possibilities. So that's one thing I wanted to go over, and maybe now is the time, city attorney?
Madam Mayor, councilmember, we did provide, my office did provide a summary of our review of the current legislation related to this and what the city's options may be in this regard. If I were to summarize those, I would say that this is something that the city could potentially do. It's contemplated under the new legislation. There isn't clear precedent for it. There is a lot of complications to pursuing it, but it could be pursued. Certainly, not anything we could do tonight. My counsel would be to continue on the path that council is on in adopting this ordinance, because right now, there's zero regulation of these products in the city. We would need time to prepare the draft ordinance. Should that be council's direction to do? And the other caveat is, you know, we're in an in-between time, between the time the current legislation is in effect and our moratorium has expired on these products. And when there will be new state regulations, we anticipate them, and the legislature is contemplating that happening sometime before January 1st of 2025. So we're in a relatively short time period under which these would, this ordinance would be in effect. It's going to be superseded by state regulation at some point. So because of that, we would recommend going forward with the second reading of this ordinance.
Okay. In that regard, one of the paragraphs in this proposed ordinance, and I'll read it because it's very short, but it's section 2, it's on page 61, for those of you that want to follow with me. But section 2 reads, "No person may keep for sale, sell, or offer to sell, or otherwise dispose of any edible cannabinoid product at any place in the city without first registering with the city in accordance with this ordinance." So that, to me, implies that other entities can, in fact, register to sell, and it is my desire to see that no other entity can sell it in our town, except perhaps for the muni. So by passing this tonight, I want to feel comforted that we can still deny the registration if anybody comes before us in that in-between period. And then, the other thing, which wouldn't be for tonight, but it's sometime in Wayzata's history, well before my time here, the city decided that the only place that liquor and beer could be sold was at the Wayzata Wine and Spirits, a wholly-owned city enterprise. And I'm wondering if there's any language anywhere that we need to change to be able to do the same thing for these products? And I don't know who I'm directing that question to, but whoever knows the answer maybe could answer it.
I'm happy to take a stab at your first question, Councilmember Plekish, and will rely on the city attorney to follow up. So based on the ordinance as it is currently written and in front of you tonight, it is based on a legal, like, registration licensing process to businesses. It is not restricted to the muni in its current form. We do not have the ability, from the first reading of the ordinance, where you all talked about that at that meeting, to change it to just the muni at the second reading. So the way the ordinance is written right now, if a business applied for and registered, I don't believe we have the authority to say no. And I'd rely on city attorney Shelz to comment on that further.
Mayor and deputy city manager, councilmembers, we do have the ability to deny an applicant if they don't meet the standard of the ordinance. So we do a background check. I mean, it's very similar to the liquor license process in the city. You know, you need to meet certain basic minimum standards. And if the applicant doesn't, the council or the city can deny an application. So it's not just a matter of filing a piece of paper and you get your registration. You would have to meet the criteria of the ordinance.
I think I understand that, but right now, no entity could come to the city and apply for a liquor license because we've restricted it to just the one. And I mean, on off-sale sales. So I would like to see that, as long as we are being coerced into being, making this available, that it be only available at the muni. So what we have to do between now and that moment is what I'm concerned about. Because, like you say, if somebody wanted to register tomorrow and they pass the background check, we'd have to give them the license to do that, and I don't want to see that happen. So that's why I wanted to discuss this outside of the consent agenda.
Councilmember, just to be clear, if you don't pass this, they don't need to register at all, and anyone can sell it in the city. So again, if council's desire is to explore that, those possibilities of limiting it further, particularly to the muni, we can look at that. We can pursue that under your direction. It's not easy. There's, like I said, there's not precedent for that. Other cities have been more restrictive. I'm not aware of any that have limited it to just their muni. Something like that is contemplated under the new statute, but again, we don't have those regulations for that yet. So this would at least give the city the benefits of some baseline criteria that applicants would need to meet. The city would know who, law enforcement in particular, would know who in the city is selling, so that if there is issues with compliance, they would have that information. So we, as staff, you know, think this is better than nothing and very much within the norm for what a lot of cities are doing.
Okay. I have one other question. It's a somewhat minor question, but it's curious to me, is in, on page 65 of our packet, under the section of violations and penalties, it goes through a list of penalties of ever-increasing magnitude, depending on the number of times a business has violated what they need to do. But then, there is this one other sentence here. It says for other adults. This is not the businesses, but it says other adults. It says, "Other adults who have violated this ordinance will be charged an administrative fine of at least $150." And I'm curious, what other things can adults do other than buy it?
Thank you, Councilmember Plekish and Mayor and councilmembers. I did discuss this with the police chief in advance of this meeting, and our interpretation is that this follows similar to what happens with tobacco and other compliance checks, that the business is held responsible for their violation, and the individual who made, say, a sale to a minor or something is also held accountable for their role in that sale. So our interpretation of that is, you know, there's the portion that talks about the establishment, and then there's also the individual.
All right. Thank you. Madam Mayor, those are all the questions I had.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Plekish. I do have one follow-up question. So in the example that Councilmember Plekish provided with, and we'll use a similar example with off-sale liquor, assuming in Wayzata, other establishments had the opportunity to sell, and then, back after prohibition ended, or I don't know when, we decided we would be the only off-sale liquor store, the ordinance was changed to only allow a city-owned, off-sale liquor establishment. If we proceed in a similar vein with these products, do we, how does that work for those who may become registered and who then no longer qualify because they're not a municipal operation? Do we give them potentially till the end of the year to work that out? Can we talk a little bit about what that might look like?
Yes, I will defer to city attorney Shelz on that one.
And if it's putting you on the spot, because it hasn't been contemplated before, you know, we can tackle it at a later time when we're exploring our different options, but.
Well, Madam Mayor, no, I appreciate that, and I should thank you for giving us some latitude there to maybe defer more complicated questions. But I think with this, it would be similar to any other regime. It would depend on the ordinance that you adopted at the time that brought everything within the muni only. So if you go to that model, where the muni would be the exclusive distributor of these products, you could craft an ordinance that allowed current licensees or license holders or registrants to continue to sell, if that's allowed under the new state regulations. So it's a little complicated. If not, those licenses would just, upon the effective date of the new ordinance, would just become ineffective, and those applicants would need to stop selling, or I'm sorry, those registrants.
Okay. Very good. Okay, very good, thank you. Right, any follow-up questions from anyone? Yes, Kathy?
Will that include THC beverages into? So is that inclusive of this?
Councilmember Iverson and Mayor and Council, the answer is yes, it does include THC beverages.
Okay, thank you.
All right, very good. All right, seeing that there are no other questions, then I would entertain a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of ordinance 828, regulating the sale of edible cannabinoid products low potency.
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McDonald, is there a second?
A second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I wanted to put it on record that I will be voting in favor of this, but not because I think we should be doing this, but because it helps our police force in knowing where this might be sold. And I'm also hopeful that we will eventually get to the point where, if we have to sell it, it will only be sold in one spot. But I do not want to oppose this tonight, because I think not passing it is worse than passing it.
Well said, okay, very good. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes as well. Thank you for that good discussion. All right, so we are now entering into next item on the agenda, which is a public hearing. It's a public hearing to consider approval of on-sale intoxicating and Sunday-on-sale intoxicating liquor licenses for Double Black Diamond Inc., DBA Red Cow, located at 881 Lake Street North. Acting City Manager, Ms. Jaeger.
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'll give a high-level overview of the license in front of you tonight. So background on this, like you just mentioned, the applicant is Double Black Diamond Inc., doing business as Red Cow. They're applying for an on-sale liquor license as well as a Sunday intoxicating liquor license. They're kind of two pieces of their overall liquor license. Their proposed hours of operation would be Monday through Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and on Fridays and Saturdays going from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Sundays from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. One thing I would note is, based on their floor plan, there is no patio associated with this license. They do have open-air access to the outside. They'll have basically a retractable door that will open up and allow kind of outside air, but the plan itself does not involve a patio. So here's a high-level screenshot of exactly where Red Cow would be located, at Lake Street North, and I believe that's Ingalls Street, across from the Great Lawn. So just to break down the process, the applicant has submitted their application and fee. The police has completed a review of their site plan and done the background check, and in front of you tonight is to hold a public hearing related to this license. So after that public hearing is opened and closed, staff does recommend approval of these licenses, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, so as I mentioned, this is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I don't see anybody rushing forward to speak. Give everybody, anybody online?
There is no one online, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Then I will close the public hearing. All right, very good. Before we move on to the applicant, any questions of staff from the council? Yes, Kathy?
I guess it's pertinent to the question I just asked. So if they choose to do THC, they'll come in and apply for a license for that.
Correct.
I was looking over the fees that were in there, and I did notice it's not inclusive in there right now.
Right, because this application is assuming with the ordinance and plans on the books as of now, and we haven't adopted that second reading and that ordinance is in effect. If they did want to go down that route, they'd have to register through that other separate process.
Okay, thank you. Very good. All right, the applicant is here. Would you care to speak? You don't have to, but you're welcome to. We invite you to, if you so desire. If you could please introduce yourself, your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Luke Schump, and we live at 35 Queensland Lane, and the Red Cow will be at 881 Lake Street. And we're extremely excited. My wife is here, and our son, and we're family-owned. I think I was here before, when there was another development. We were hoping to have a Red Cow. We've been wanting to have a Red Cow in Wayzetta for years, so we are grateful that a space was available that fit us, and we're just excited to be here in town. And we ask for approval, and we definitely will not be rowdy.
Lively, not rowdy.
Lively, exactly.
That's right. No, perfect. Yes, you have neighbors right above you. If you could just stay there for just a moment.
Any questions?
Any questions of the applicant? Yes, please.
When are you hoping to open?
Pending this approval, we're on target, if everything here goes through, for mid-October, mid to late October.
So have you addressed potential issues with the residents above?
We have. We've been, the building owner, President P. Holmes, and Ryan Companies, who manages the building, has been in several discussions with the HOA, and we're getting ready to have a meeting with them and myself. But we've, we also hired a sound engineer and a, kind of noise mitigation specialist to help us with some of the vibrations and things that happen, that can be, gets transferred through from just machines and equipment and noise and such. So we're trying to mitigate it as best as possible, and obviously, at the end of the day, it's always a retail space with residents above, so there's, there will always be challenges, but we're doing our utmost to mitigate those like we've done at other locations.
Excellent, thank you. Anybody else? Well, I would like to thank you for, you know, choosing Wayzetta. You're not far, you live right up the road. But it is a very special place. It has become, you know, a destination for eating and visiting, so it's been quite the buzz about town that you guys are coming, and so thank you for choosing to be in Wayzetta, for taking a chance on us, and for being good neighbors to the people who will be above you. So we're very excited to have and welcome all of you, and wish you continued success.
Thank you, yeah, we are excited, and I think, you know, our first Red Cow, we lived about a mile away, so we were definitely, we're part of that fabric of that neighborhood, and we're very excited to be basically half a mile away and be able to walk, I can actually walk home, which is nice.
That's right, absolutely. Oh, that's fantastic. All right, well, any other thoughts from the council, or would anyone care to make a motion to consider approval on sale intoxicating and Sunday-on-sale intoxicating liquor licenses for Double Black Diamond Inc., DBA Red Cow, located 881 Lake Street North?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Thank you, Kathy, and a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more item on our agenda, and that's under new business. But before we move on to new business, I'm going to take a quick recess, so feel free to get up, stretch your legs. We will be back momentarily, and we are officially in recess.
So you notice we got a different face up here. Our mayor had a personal issue that she needed to attend to, so she turned the gavel over to me for the rest of the evening, so beware. But like to pick up with our last item here, which is item 9A, and that's to consider adoption of Resolution 47-2023 and approval of the first reading of Ordinance 830 approving the Planned Unit Development General Plan Residential Shoreland Planned Unit Development Conditional Use Permit and Zoning Map Amendment for Westway Condominiums located at 201 Lake Street East. So with that, staff?
Thank you Mayor Protam and Council. I'll turn it over to Director Gellner to walk us through this application.
Thank you. The owner of the property is Lowell Zitzloff and the applicant is Westway LLC, present in the audience this evening. This project is located on Lake Street between Ferndale Road and Berry Avenue. It is zoned C4A Limited Central Business District, and it is guided Central Business District in our comprehensive plan. For some context in the neighborhood, this property is bordered by Edgewood Court to the west and the Ferndale Ridge Townhomes. There's a single-family home to the northwest and the Weisetta Villas to the north. To the east are two newer developments, Melvin's 235 Office and Ventana Apartments, and behind them is the newer Lake and Berry Parking Lot owned by the city, and then of course, Lake Street to the south and Lake Minnetonka. The property is 2.73 acres in size. There is an existing two-story office building that is vacant located on the site. Behind that building is a parking lot, and behind that is a wetland, a rather large wetland, over 25,000 square feet, as well as an existing stormwater pond. Here's a couple photos of the property today. The applicant is requesting three requests that we would like to review with you this evening. The first is a Planned Unit Development General Plan. This is for a new building that's 106,000 square feet in size, three stories, with a mixture of uses, 38 residential condominiums, three commercial condominiums, and three flexible condominiums, which could include commercial or residential. Second is a Shoreland Residential Planned Unit Development Conditional Use Permit, or a PUDCUP, and this is related to the 38 residential condominiums and their relation to Lake Minnetonka, as well as the three flexible units. And lastly is a zoning map amendment to rezone the property from C4A to PUD. The design review has been conducted at the administrative level, and no design deviations are requested this evening, so there are none to review. Here's the proposed site plan. The red dotted line represents the existing building footprint, and of course, the existing building will be removed under this proposal. This new proposal will look like two separate buildings, but will really serve as one building with all shared underground parking. The building will be three stories in size, and there's the unit mix there listed on the screen. There's a shared courtyard shown in brown in the center of the site, and there's a nature trail for mostly private use. Really, it's for the Westway residents and for the Ferndale Ridge Townhome residents to the west, and that trail is next to the stormwater pond in the rear of the site. So on December 6, 2022, Resolution 66-2022 was adopted. The council approved a PUD concept plan, a variance of four feet 10 inches off the required 35-foot maximum height limit to a total height not to exceed 39 feet 10 inches, and then a Shoreland Impact Plan CUP for the building height that exceeds 35 feet in the Shoreland Overlay District, meaning its proximity to Lake Minnetonka. There were four unique conditions added by the City Council at that time that I'd like to review here, so that as you review the proposal tonight, you can see how the applicant has attempted to address all of these. The first condition is that the applicant should maintain three commercial condominiums in the east building at the ground level on Lake Street, but they should convert four commercial condominiums to a flexible use, meaning they could be commercial or residential, depending on the tenants that they find or the owners that they find. And this would be in the west building only for the flexible units. I have a couple site plans that will zoom in on that for you, so you can visualize that a bit better, but this was a condition of the council in December. A second is to increase the front setback of the west building along Lake Street to 10 feet. Third is to address the city engineer's comments, and then finally, the last is to explore additional public space or other public benefits as part of the overall PUD plan. So at this point, I'll ask that consulting planner Eric Swaber provide information about the site plan. We did not include every detail. We went through this plan very thoroughly with Planning Commission, so in general, what we kept in here were what we felt were the highest points of discussion with the Planning Commission or were with the council back in December. If the plan meets certain code requirements, we did not focus on that this evening. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Community Development Director Gellner, and thank you council for having me here today. So the site plan, and specifically what's changed from the concept plan is first, for the west residents, that front yard setback has increased to 10 feet. If you recall, the front yard setback of the west residents was six feet in the concept plan, so that increased from six to 10. The front yard setback in the, oh, sorry, the front yard setback for the east residents has stayed the same of nine feet. Second, the nature trail formerly had gone all the way around the stormwater pond, making a loop. The applicant has stated they made changes to this for two reasons. One, that trail was within the wetland buffer, and by removing this, it increased and improved that wetland buffer. And second, due to the lack of interest in that, they decided to shorten that to the cul-de-sac shown. They did increase the residences by two, from 36 to 38. Now, one of those increases is a result that this plan is different than the concept plan approval. If you remember, the concept plan approval had that three commercial units stay commercial, and the other four commercial units, they were commercial at that time, could be flexible units. They've only converted three of the four to flexible units, and one, which happens to be the residence on the first floor, or the west residence that faces north, is solely residential in this proposal. So that was one of the two increases in units. The second increase was on the second floor. They were able to rearrange some of the shapes of the units and basically increase it by one. So one of the changes is because what was formerly commercial has now become residential. The other one was finding additional space for an additional unit. So in summary, of the former seven commercial condos, three of those remain commercial. They are located basically around the shared atrium, so there are two located in the front of the east residents, and then one at that southeast corner of the west residents. Those all have, well, in the next slide, I'll show you the access. The three flexible units are in the west building, all facing Lake Street. And this exhibit helps to really show those locations. As I stated, one of the additional residential units is that one in the northwest corner that faces north or west. That former commercial unit has become residential. In the west residents, the three flex units are there on the, basically to the southwest. All of those access a patio and then staircase down to sidewalk. The three commercial units, the one in the southeast corner, the west residents, and the other two on Lake Street, they all are at sidewalk level. I will note, when you look at the commercial units, particularly the ones in the east building, there is a narrow one right next to the shared atrium that is proposed to be a coffee shop, and that is limited in size due to the parking requirements, and we'll go into more detail on that. So again, this is the elevation showing the same location. There's a shared atrium, you know, splitting the single building into what looks like two facades. There is the parking on the far east side in what is called the east residence. There's two commercial on the first floor. What is called the west residence, there is a commercial next to the atrium, and then the three flex units. Couple other changes from the concept plan approval was removal of the trail that connected the property to the north to the city-owned parking lot. That would have required a boardwalk across the wetland. There also was not interest expressed by the property owner to the north in that one. Second was eliminating the possibility of enclosing the wetland between the city parking lot and the Melvin's building and this building into a culvert. The third change was removing existing retaining walls on the east side, which will increase the buffer. The former retaining walls, which were there for the parking lot, were up to just a very few feet from the wetland. Now with the new retaining wall, there is a 15-foot buffer between the wetland and the retaining walls. And then finally, the applicant has committed to a $220,000 financial contribution for the entire project to the city park system. So to go in detail about the open space, which again, was an important discussion during that concept plan, there's this color-coded map, and I'll go into the different color coatings. 32.8% of the open space provided, which is almost 7,000 square feet, is open to the general public. Those are the areas in red. They included the additional area that was set back along Lake Street, so that additional four feet, and then it is both the sidewalk leading from Edgewood Court to that rear courtyard. Oh, the general public, that did increase by 330, or sorry, 936 feet, again, mostly due to that increased setback of that west residence. 5.7% of the open space, or about 1,200 square feet, is that trail which comes off of that rear courtyard adjacent to the stormwater pond. That has been shortened, as discussed, because of increasing the buffer and the lack of interest. It's only available to the residents of this complex and the Ferndale Ridge residents. As a result of shortening that, a little over 2,000 square feet has been removed since the concept plan. The area in yellow is area that is only open to the residents themselves. It's 6% of the overall open space, it's a little over 12,000 square feet. The area in yellow is basically the ground floor areas adjacent to the ground floor residences, so it's essentially the pavement that isn't available to the general public. That is 412 square feet more than what was in the concept plan. And then finally, well, second to last, the green is the patios for the private residences. So there is some on the first floor, but it's most of the second, third floor units, the outdoor patios that they have there. That's more than half of the proposed open space, but it is 424 feet less just due to tweaks in the floor plans from the previous, from the concept plan. So that's a grand total of just over 20,000 square feet. Happened to be almost 1,200 square feet less than the concept plan. Most of that reduction has to do with the trail that used to go all the way around the stormwater pond, that reduction. So tree preservation, they do meet the tree preservation requirements. 232.25 inches are, must be replaced. They're proposing 322.75 inches of replacement. Replacement trees will be throughout this site and some on the Ferndale Ridge. Those are kind of shown in that black outline. Those would be replacement trees on Ferndale Ridge. That does comply with the ordinance. Since concept plan approval, more trees have been proposed to be saved on site, both due to the shape of the stormwater pond and that change in the trail. By reducing the loop to the trail, they were able to save more trees than was in the concept plan. This property is within the Shoreland District, and because it has residential units, more than five residential units, it needs a Shoreland Residential PUD/CUP. In this case, you know, we always start with the base of what does the comp plan allow, and within the tiers that are shown here in orange and yellow, are they within the comprehensive plan range? And only if they deviate do we kind of discuss options. Here you can see for tier two and tier three, they're both between 20 and 30, you know, listed there at a little over 21 dwelling units per acre for each tier. So they meet that first standard. The second standard is that the development has to have 30% open space, and they're proposing 93, or sorry, 39% open space. So the two standards for Shoreland Residential PUD/CUP are met with this proposal. Excuse me, to move on to parking. The majority of the parking here is served by the underground parking below the building, which again, it was accessed on the east side of the building. That is shown in the image on the bottom. In addition, there is 11 stalls behind the building that would be for both the commercial businesses and guests, is the intention there. So they are proposing, well, first, the table shows they are required with the uses as proposed to be 110 parking demand. They're proposing 113 total between the underground and surface parking. Would point out that that is a reduction of four from the concept plan. That mostly had to do with kind of spending more time with traffic movements and the shape of the underground parking. This does exceed the requirements. I would also point out, from a number of recent proposals, they are not requesting a shared use parking CUP. So they took the code demand for each use and met that with their parking. They didn't look at what use is at what time, and could that result in a parking reduction. They are meeting the parking at all times during the day. Finally, of the 200, or sorry, 102 stalls underground, 16 are tandem stalls. One of the conditions recommended is that, and the commitment from the developer as well, is that those eight locations where there are the tandem stalls, one behind the other, those will either go to a single residential unit or a commercial unit. So whoever is parking behind someone else, it's either the resident within that unit, they're parking behind their own unit, or it's a commercial business that employees would be parking behind themselves.
So we have just a few more summary slides here. The neighborhood notification process included a public hearing notice in the Sun Sailor, as well as notice sent to the Department of Natural Resources due to its proximity to Lake Minnetonka, and then notices were mailed to all property owners within 750 feet of the property, and no public comment letters were received as of the publication of the City Council packet. There was a neighborhood meeting on July 20th. There were 13 people in attendance, and the following topics on the screen were included in that discussion, many of which come up in the conditions of approval that were recommended by the Planning Commission. The city engineer had a few comments, but they weren't necessarily very substantial. They were really, you know, about utilities, about average grade change that's minimal on the site, about wetland delineation, and then working with the applicant on some stormwater pond tasks that are related to working with STAN-TAC in the future. So nothing too monumental here. And then the Planning Commission recommended approval of the application. They included several conditions, and all of these conditions can be viewed on page 143 of the agenda packet. So I'll run through each of these because they are also in the council's resolutions. They were carried forward from the Planning Commission into your resolution this evening, and that's Resolution 47-2023. So the first is that in the final PUD plan and the PUD development agreement, that the applicant must first incorporate that tandem parking spaces in the building are owned and controlled and used by the same unit owner. And then second, that all the final landscaping amenities that are benefiting the neighboring properties be installed. So if you'd like to see a site plan of those amenities, that is on page 244 of the agenda packet. And what this includes is additional plantings on the west side of the property, in the northwest, I'll say, which is near Ferndale Ridge Townhomes, and then also an improvement to the signs for Ferndale Ridge Townhomes, and some additional plantings of Arborvitae on the west side of the cul-de-sac as well. Two more conditions here that were, three more that were recommended by the Planning Commission and are included in your resolution this evening. Again, those are on page 143, if you'd like to read the full version of that. The one is to include easements that ensure public access to the areas that were shown on the open space plan to be open to the general public. Generally, this was the red areas that were on the open space plan, and I can go back to that. It's generally the sidewalk area out front on Lake Street, and then the shared parking lot in the back with that, some of that courtyard space. And then also that the uses for the commercial and flex units, so meaning what types of businesses can be located in those units, those proposed uses must comply with the C4A zoning district, and of course, our parking requirements as well. And then lastly, since neighbors were concerned about construction management, over the course of this project, if approved, we've asked that a construction management plan be submitted by the applicant and be found acceptable to city staff, and we've done this with other major projects in town as well. So with that, we do have two unique motions this evening. The first is the resolution with those conditions, and then second is the ordinance for the rezoning. Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Thank you all for that nice brief. Are there any questions for staff?
What is the square footage of the flex units? The three flex units?
Yes, yes, we'll pull up the numbers, and as we do, I'll just pull up the site plan that zooms in on those spaces a little more. We're just going to go find that first level floor plan, so we can check the numbers for you.
Okay, there are three of the flex units. They vary. The smallest is 1,088 square feet. The second, the next largest, is 1,129 square feet, and the largest, which happens to be the southwest corner there, is 1,691 square feet.
How many parking spaces are allocated to these three units? Or left for these three units, let's say?
The, the base parking calculation would be three parking stalls per 1,000 square feet, and so it is almost 4,000 square feet, so there should be 12.
Okay, so three per thousand. And what is that base case insurance agency, obviously not a restaurant, because you would need more, what is the base case commercial kind of uses?
So office and retail both have the same parking standard, and that is the three parking stalls per 1,000 square feet. Now, if they came, you know, so, you know, office would apply, you know, to a fairly broad category. If they came in with a, like a beauty salon, that is calculated on a different factor, and we would have to either look at the square footage, or if there's another requirement. Maybe one example would be if one of these was a medical or dental office, that parking requirement is five stalls per doctor or dentist, so we'd have to know how many doctors or dentists there are to figure out, are they, you know... So we'd have to know how many doctors or dentists there are to figure out, are they, do they have these, the right amount of parking?
Okay. So here's my concern. We want to make these flex units. And so we have the ability to, enough parking there to have some sort of base case commercial, but we don't have the parking to maybe have a doctor or a beauty salon, or probably a restaurant?
Correct. So the applicant looked, and that's the last row in that column, they looked at, coffee shop is same parking as a restaurant. So when you look at that potential coffee shop, that's restaurant, coffee shop, food and beverage establishments is what we now call that category. That category is calculated through now commercial restaurant or bar, but their coffee shop calculation is 10 stalls for that 800, or sorry, 619 square feet. So much more than 619 square feet of food and beverage establishments here, they would exceed their parking that they're providing.
Okay. So here's my concern, and we're making a decision by making these flex, is that there isn't enough parking and we could do Philop or something like that for other businesses than just the basic. I might, I think we're making a decision that these are going to go residential. And do we want four, five, and six? Do we want six commercial spaces there? Or do we want to keep them flexible? And I think it's more than likely that they're going to end up being residential and we should realize that. Because I'm not sure the flex is the right decision. I think maybe it should be something more on the lines of these, we try and lease these as commercial for three years, see if we can get somebody, I think they're buying them. I think they're for sale, aren't they? Try and sell them for three years and then, then they come back to the council and say, these aren't selling, could we convert them to residential? As opposed to making them flexible now. Because we're making a decision that they're probably going to go residential, because those are going to fly off the shelf.
Can I add three, three pieces of information? Not trying to influence you one way or another, but just from what you brought up.
And I'm just, I'm kind of for the commercial, but I just want the other council members to know that this is the way I see it.
Yeah. So the first one is, you know, they, they basically have 12 parking stalls for the three units identified as service commercial now.
Yeah.
If they became three residential units, the parking requirement would only be six stalls.
Right.
Two per residential. So the, the parking is built for commercial. The, well, maybe it's-
For some commercials, for some commercial.
Yeah, yep. Commercial that would fit the service commercial category that we talk about in our downtown. Should the developer or future business, future unit owner, whatever, you know, want to propose a use that would exceed the 113 stalls as called for straight out in our parking code, an option other than Philop would be to submit for a conditional use permit for that joint parking facility, which could include looking at what uses have predominant parking at what time and try to demonstrate that there is. So Philop is not their only solution should there be a parking demand. But the approval requested in front of you is they have 113 stalls and their proposed uses cannot generate more than 113 parking demand.
Okay. Well, my opinion still stands that as, as a developer myself, commercial is less of a priority and less, is more of a challenge than residential. And if we give them this flexibility, we're kind of making a decision that these will go residential. So that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Councilman Overparkill. Any other questions on council?
I have some.
I do. Mine are kind of piggybacking Councilmember Parkill.
Mine too, so you go.
Are you sure?
Yep.
Okay. Also, questions about the flex spaces. I actually thought it sounded kind of cool, like a live work. That's how I understood it, that it was a live work unit where you would have your business in the same, under the same roof of where you live. So I, it's, am I misunderstanding or is it one or the other?
It basically could be one of three things as the conditional use permit condition described. It could be solely residential, it could be solely commercial, it could be the live work. Now, I'm going to ask City Attorney Shuzzle to correct me if my reading or interpretation of the code is incorrect or need nuance. Concept plan approval does not mean they're going to get general plan approval. So this is a discussion open for you of what are the appropriate conditions. We pointed out both what was your motion as part of the concept plan, what was the planning commission recommendation, but ultimately it is for your decision tonight.
Understood.
Um, council members, I guess I would just add that consultant planners Weaver is correct, you know, that the approval of concept plan doesn't bind you to approve this, this general plan, and you could certainly attach new reasonable conditions to, to it. I mean, the way it's currently worded now in the conditions of approval of this plan, the recommended conditions, is that these units would need to comply with the permit, you know, the standards for permitted accessory and conditional uses of C4A. So basically, anything that's allowed to happen in C4A could happen in these flex units. So if you're wondering about what that list is, you know, our, our planners can elaborate on that.
Plus residential, C4A plus R5, isn't it? If it's a flex unit?
Help me, it says conditional, right?
It includes conditional uses, yeah. So that's where I wanted-
First floor residential is allowed as a conditional use permit on, in the C4A district.
Okay.
So that is one of that list.
And just to follow up on that, planners Weaver, what you're saying is that these units are, if the developer or future owner of these units wanted to go residential, it would be a conditional use and they'd have to come back for a CUP?
I, I'm not sure that that is how we have contemplated it. I felt that the-
We should, we should definitely clarify that now in the record as to what your recommended condition is here.
Yeah, I mean, my recommendation is that if you choose to keep them flexible, that that's how this PUD district is zoned. You're allowing that at this juncture. If you'd like it to be a future CUP, it's a lot of process for that applicant to bring each owner through. It could be not very cost effective for them and they might lose any potential for a commercial owner through that process. So I think, I would recommend that you make that decision at this PUD general plan stage now if you are comfortable with it.
And so Director Gellner, so what you're saying then, I think is consistent with what the council member was saying, that really this, and by the way, I'm looking at condition, recommended condition number four of the resolution, Romanet four, the requirement that the uses of the commercial and flex units in the PUD, we probably want to say must either be residential or comply with the commercial uses of C4A. Is that right? That's essentially what we're trying to get it, get at there. Or?
Yes, the commercial, the uses of the, the commercial use within those flex units just needs to comply with the C4A zoning district.
Right. So they could be residential as of right, or they could be commercial as long as it's consistent with C4A?
Right.
Okay. Does that, does that clarify the question? So, so I think it's actually closer to what you said earlier, council member, where it could be residential from the get-go, or it could be commercial consistent with the C4A commercial uses.
I mean, my goal is not to have these units languish out there like the ones near the hotel, at the very east end of Lake Street. I mean, I guess they were never designed to be residential and it's too difficult to change, but there's vacant units down there that we'd probably at this point say, hey, put in residences, put in residences there. I mean, they should be occupied, but I think we are, the easiest route right now is for residential. Those could be sold like all the other 38 units and, you know, those would always be residential and never be commercial. What do we want as a council? Do we want six commercial there? If we do, then I think we need to be a little stronger in our wording that these should be commercial and then if they don't lease, or they, they don't sell as commercial, then in a certain amount of time, they can come back for a CUP.
Can I just add to the conversation?
Yep.
I do think it's, I do think that there is a need for some commercial down there. I think for sure a coffee shop. I think we've heard from other people that we are trying to get people down to that side of town. So I'd hate to say completely all residential. I think we should make a good go of it and see what we can get, because I do think there is business opportunities that do exist down there. There's untapped opportunities. But I like what you're saying is let's put some type of a date or something to say that it could never be, but I would like to see the building owner try to get a go of having some type of commercial start to migrate down to that end of town. I think the residents would like it that live in that building to be able to have stuff down there and not have to walk down all the time. So I refer to staff to ask, how do we actually word that so that Councilmobile's Parkill's concerns that we aren't locked into it is addressed? But my concern that we don't want to shut that door.
It can be difficult for us to set a time, a period of time at this stage. That means that staff has to monitor that in three to five years, watch for that date to come up and then say, hey, your entitlements are changing as of this date on this property. With it being condos, there's going to be multiple ownership entities involved with this PUD district. That could get fairly complicated, but I understand what you're saying, that vacancy is not what we desire here at all. I think that's where the council was going last December with just trying to keep it flexible to see where the market went, but Councilmember Parkill's pointing out that we're in a very hot housing market where they very well could go residential. I could recommend that, you know, the, the flex spaces here on Lake Street are going to be really interesting residential opportunities. There is some privacy provided in the site plan with the covered porches and entrances, but they're not going to be the most private units in town. And, you know, one other piece of information we've heard from, from the promenade is that we're all out of Lake Street addresses down there and the Lake Street address is very desirable for the commercial properties. So I think the applicant is open to this plan. I'd be curious during their Q and A, if they're open to going back to some more commercial units here right away. Maybe it's a PUD amendment later if they try out commercial and they can't sell any of these commercial units, perhaps across the entirety of the frontage of Lake Street. Maybe you would then entertain a PUD amendment to go residential. I would rather set it up that way than try to put a timestamp in it now that just sounds hard for us to administer effectively.
I agree with you, Emily, on that.
Or just, that's okay. Just request a CUP at some point in time in the future. Would that be easier than a PUD amendment?
Yeah, I think they're probably about equal, honestly. The findings that are made are a bit different, the conversation's slightly different, but overall, you're, you're looking at the effect that it has on the area and whether it complies with your comprehensive plans. So I don't feel strongly about which one of those happens.
Okay.
Director Gellner, are these units, would they be ADA accessible?
Yes, they would from the back rear entrance is my understanding. I think we have some stairs up in the front, is that correct or please correct me?
Yeah, they would actually be ADA accessible from both directions. It's just if they're coming from Lake Street, they would have to come in that vestibule off of that atrium, take the elevator up and then come over. They wouldn't, that front stair is not the accessible route, but basically from either the back or the front, if they enter in, into the main lobby and take the elevator in the lobby, it is accessible.
That's helpful. And then my other question was more about how the, how the units would be marketed. So I think that's a better question for the applicant, but yes.
Real quick, since I wasn't at this last meeting, I just have some quick questions that you guys may have answered. And again, it's come up with another application before and it really has to do with delivery and where UPS, Amazon, you guys may have talked about that, but please just quick five minute or two second education for me. UPS, Amazon, moving trucks, packages, is there a delivery location so that they don't stop? I think we have four or five parking spots on Lake Street, but if those are all being used, we don't want them to stop in the middle of the road. Will they be directed down to the backside of the building? Is that the intent?
Yes, there are actual three proposed. So on Edgewood Court, the one's directly off Edgewood Court, the other one's within the parking lot off Edgewood Court. So you'll see an area in gray just to the northwest of the West Residences. That is able to accommodate a semi truck.
Okay, it was very hard in my packet to read.
Understood.
Any of the fine print. So that's why I wanted to ask.
As well as we, you know, we have reduced sizes documents in the packet. And then the, the area at the east end of those 11 stalls, there is actually space for two delivery vehicles. The slightly longer one would be like a UPS truck. The other one's kind of a more standard delivery van. So there are three off-street delivery spaces. They, they will, they, they are not parking spaces. They are dedicated for delivery vehicles.
Good luck with that, right? From an enforcement standpoint. So real quick, Eric, then, there's also, so you see the parking, there's also kind of a long rectangle. Is that meant for semis? What is this?
Below the parking.
Below the parking.
Towards the West Residences.
Gray rectangle.
Yep. And that is meant for a semi. It's kind of outlined is the axles and the length of the semi.
Is that the dash lines that show the turning radius? Follow the belt to back into that?
Exactly.
Okay.
Two delivery spots and one moving spot, so to speak. Is that what it is?
Right.
Okay, any other questions?
I, real quick, I do have one for staff, and this was something that was noted in, on page 271 of our packet, and it has to do with the existing city trunk lines on Lake Street for fire management, that there will be some type of disturbance. And 272 talks about it too.
Yep, that's the, the temporary reduction in, in the fire flow during the construction. Is that what you're referring to?
Has the fire chief or anybody commented on if, in the event that there is a fire back on, on those other properties, how we will address that?
The city engineer is the one that reviewed, well, that hired STANTEC to review this. I can't go into detail on how he shared that with the fire chief, but this is public information, or I mean, this is information that's available to city staff.
Okay, yeah, because I didn't see any comments one way or another regarding that. So that is- So that is a potential concern, and I don't know, hydrants that are around there or what, but, you know, this could be a potential two-year project, if not a little longer. And to have that fire protection kind of compromised for that length of a period is a little bit of a concern.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? I've got a few questions here. First, I'd like to do a shout-out to the Planning Commission. I think they did another great job in analyzing this. Many of the questions that I think would have come from this day is tonight, were answered at the Planning Commission stage, which is as it should be. But there were some insightful questions. One I particularly enjoyed was from Commissioner Sorensen, who asked about the traffic flow and any construction issues with the Ferndale Ridge development right there at Edgewood Court. So I think their questions were satisfactory there. So I've got a few questions here. So we've been talking about the flex units. That was one of the questions I had. So could you remind me what the rationale was in the first place as to why there's flex versus one or the other?
So the original proposal was all commercial, and the rationale for that was both the comprehensive plan, asking for that mixed usage on Lake Street, as well as if this were a C4 building, there is a requirement for 50% of the ground floor and 50% of the Lake Street frontage being commercial. So the original proposal of those seven commercial units were to match the requirement if this was zoned C4A. The, this is a PUD. There is no commercial requirement as a part of the PUD. The applicant at the concept plan asked for that flexibility in those seven units, and so it was submitted in the concept plan as seven commercial units, but the developer asked for flexibility on those four. That condition we reviewed of the four flex units was what the council determined at that meeting.
Okay. The reason I ask that is because there's been some discussion about wanting more commercial on that end of the block or the street, and we have struggled with filling commercial space on both ends of Lake Street. I would hate to see that happen again. The current plan that we've got here in front of us is, it's what, three commercial units right now, and the other with flex? And to Commissioner Park Hill's suggestion is if we approve it the way it is tonight, which by the way, I'm inclined to do, it may kind of naturally fall to residents just because of the nature of what's going on down there. And I think that's a realistic assumption and probably a realistic fact that filling those with commercial businesses is just going to be tough. But we already do have some commercial there, and with regard to a comment made about residential being kind of oddly located right there on Lake Street, it wouldn't be a first. We've got them both to the west and to the east. You know, Wayzetta Blue has residences right there on Lake Street, literally four feet from their front door is the sidewalk to Lake Street. And it's not a place I would want to buy, but apparently they're pretty hot, and the developer there didn't have any trouble selling it whatsoever. In fact, there were people lined up to get that particular unit. So I don't think selling them as residences would be a problem, not only for them to sell it, but I think for us as a city, because it would be very difficult to fill a commercial space. And I'd hate to see that those places stay empty for a year, or two, or three, or maybe forever, until they come back and say, well, you know, can we do a commercial or a residential now? So I actually wouldn't be in favor of switching it from flex to commercial here tonight. I do have some questions about parking, though. One is on page, let me see here, page 293, line 41. It says that the 11 stalls that would be intended for guests and customers, that's that north parking lot, I'm just curious, is that enough parking for, I mean, that's basically where all guests would go, all people visiting, maybe the coffee shop would go? Is that enough space? Apparently, your formula says it is, but it just doesn't seem right to me.
So there, I just, I guess I'd clarify for commercial, the intention is that wouldn't be for employees of the commercial business. They can use the underground parking. The intention for-
I wasn't referring to employees. I was talking to retail customers or guests.
Right. The, we currently don't have a code requirement of how to break out surface versus underground or guest versus residence or employees.
So remind me where the coffee shop potentially would be located-
Yep.
-relative to that parking lot?
So it would be located, you could see a light gray area kind of between the east and west residents. That's the sidewalk in front of the shared atrium, to the south of the shared atrium. The first unit to the east of that, and so people who are visiting that business can park in the 11-stall parking lot, use what is the shared courtyard, which is that kind of more medium brown, go into the shared atrium and either go directly into the coffee shop, or could go to that light gray area of the sidewalk in front of the shared atrium and use the door there to go into the business. The other option, which we don't count as a parking requirement, are the spaces that are adjacent to the building on Lake Street.
Okay. Let me see, I have some other questions here. Actually, on that same page, 293, further up, and this was quoting from you, Mr. Weber, noted that there's a very technical finding that needs to happen, and explained that there is an environmental evaluation in the area, and that this, we're talking about that water body there, right? That doesn't need to be, it doesn't need an exemption from that code for some reason, and I'm not articulating it very well, but there was a point made that they don't, because it was man-made, it doesn't have to comply with the water ordinances. And I understand that. My curiosity is, how would it change? How would things change if it did have to comply? Because there is a reason why these things exist, for good reasons, and here is a body of water, and the fact that it's man-made versus not man-made, I'm wondering if there's any effect on that by them not being exempted? If you understand my question?
I do, I do. And I'm trying to get to the page of the packet. Okay, it is page 248 of the packet. It's the, you know, in the packet, again, it's the reduced size, but there is drainage utilities meant over the entirety of that rear area, but there is the dash line that indicates where the consultant picked, or the consultant determined that the components of hydrology and vegetation and the like made it a wetland. That includes the existing stormwater pond, the man-made feature. So to answer your question of, we go through this determination, and the entities in control say that that is a wetland, you need to count it towards your area. The next step would be a mitigation plan, which essentially the site plan is. That wetland area shown here is smaller than the area shown in blue on the site plan. So the newly created area could provide mitigation for the removed area. But as the city engineer stated in his comments, this is a element that should go through the process to be removed according to the Wetland Conservation Act.
Okay, I'm not totally sure I understand that, but what you're saying is that we don't need to worry about it tonight? Is that?
That the engineer's condition covers that category. So it's addressed in that vein, that they would need to go through the Wetland Conservation Act permit, and that they'll have to comply with that permit.
All right. Thank you. The change that you noted upfront about changing from four to three residential units, did that change the footprint of the overall project?
No.
I didn't think it did, but I want to be sure.
Well, so let me maybe back up a step. It wasn't the change of that unit that changed the overall footprint. It was essentially the west residence north building line is the same as it was in the concept plan. The south building line for the west residence went north four feet, so-
Yeah, I understood that. I meant the change in configuration, whether that changed the footprint, and it doesn't sound like it did, okay? See here, the, I'm curious, there was a note in here that there's $220,000 that the developer is contributing to the Parks Fund? And I'm curious, was that voluntary or required, or a combination of the two?
It was voluntary in this case. So in the condition that the council had from back in December, they had asked the applicant to explore other ideas for open space on the property itself, and the applicant really struggled with finding locations for additional open space. So the way it was worded with the council was to explore, this is number four, explore additional public space or other public benefits as part of the overall plan. So at the time of concept plan, there were a few ideas floating for how to make more open space in this plan, but none were really appealing to the council at the time, and so I advised the applicant to explore a financial contribution to the city park system, knowing that the residents and commercial owners would be using the city park system extensively after this project were built, and that nothing was really working on-site. In other projects, like with Wells Fargo, we saw a private pool added as an amenity. That wasn't really a good option on this site. So a financial contribution to the city was something they added to their application to show about public benefit.
Okay, well, that's quite generous, and I think a lot more flexible for us. We can use it any way that we feel for our parks, so thank you for that. What else here? The tree inches that were proposed, it also, it looks like they were proposing a tree-inch replacement that is materially bigger than the requirement. My question is, is most or all of that excess, those trees that are going to be planted on the Ferndale Ridge property, or is it just within their own confines? Do you know?
I don't know the exact percentage, but you are correct that the majority, the amount on the Ferndale Ridge is about the excess amount. Now, we're also encouraged by an excess amount. We had the city forester take a look at it. There are protection measures that have to happen during construction, and if those don't happen, even if the tree survives, we still count that as replacement. So having that excess helps us during construction to ensure that there truly is a like amount of trees at the end of the project as there is today.
Okay, I assume that they got approval from Ferndale Ridge for this?
That, yes and no, in that one of the conditions is that they meet with Ferndale Ridge and go over that public amenity or that amenity piece and finalize this. So this has been proposed to Ferndale Ridge, they are aware of it, but we did require the additional step that the applicant needs to meet with Ferndale Ridge to finalize that plan.
Okay. Well, I can't imagine they'd say no, but you never know. They could come back and say no. But again, I can't imagine that.
I think it's allowing some flexibility for Ferndale Ridge and the applicant to, you know, meet on-site, talk about exact spaces where it should be, what species makes sense, all that kind of-
Yeah, and we'd like to see good neighbors develop a relationship, so. Any other questions of staff before we turn it over to the developer? No? Well, then I'd invite the developer representative to come on up and address us. Again, please state your name and address, if you would.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp and City Council. My name's Darren Schmidt. I'm with Bruce Schmidt and Associates. We're an architectural firm. We're at 320 Manitoba Avenue South in Wayzetta. I guess staff has done a pretty good job of going through this, so I thought I'd probably skip my presentation. I'll go on to the items you guys have brought up, since obviously you've spent quite a bit of time looking at this. So the flex units. So our original plan, when we first approached the city staff, before we actually officially submitted anything, was to come in with three units, commercial. Through the process of dealing with staff, we decided to come in with the seven, but request some flexibility. You know, originally, we were very concerned, just as you guys have voiced, being able to make seven commercial units here work. I think since then, we've kind of looked at it a little differently than that. I think, we actually think seven are, at this point, six, six will probably actually work. We see, you know, two things, people being able to buy a unit and not have to pay rent, and then actually to get a Lake Street access or address is probably a, but we would like to have a back door in case it doesn't work. So I mean, that's kind of why the flex units were there, is to give us a back door if we can't sell them as commercial units. So I mean, I, you know, every intent that we would attempt to market them as commercial units, service commercial, so I mean, and part of the reason we went, we got rid of the one on the Edgewood Court side was just to minimize, you know, disturbance, potential disturbances, you know, to Ferndale Ridge. It kind of, during the process, nobody seemed to want to have that commercial one back there. So I mean, that's why we switched it to residential. So otherwise, we probably would have just left it as a flex unit as well. But, so I mean, the intent is that these get marketed as commercial units that would have Lake Street addresses. So I mean, I think there's a market for that, so. Guest parking stalls, so I mean, we have three stalls currently, more than are required for each use, if you add them up. So I mean, the intent is that the commercial units can park, they can have their guests park inside if they want, they can have them park outside. I mean, there's, the intent is the coffee shop, people could park inside for that. So I mean, it's, we've tried to provide, I guess, as many spots as we can for those people to be able to use it. Now, I can't dictate how, once these units get sold, to control who they let park where at that point, but my assumption is, is we would have, we would take a certain number of the commercial parking spots, even though they're dedicated to a unit, we would probably make them guest parking stalls. So I mean, there's no means of doing that in the ordinance, but just from a practical standpoint, that's what would need to happen to be able to service the commercial units. So I mean, that's something that we would have to get figured out, but. So basically, the stormwater pond, that's a stormwater pond that was built with the building in 1996 or '97, when that was built. Obviously, 2021, a wetland delineator goes out there and surveys, does a wetland survey, doesn't know that that is a stormwater pond, it became part of the wetland. So I mean, we didn't draw the building in the late '90s, but I've already provided the drawings that it was, that pond was constructed of to the city. I don't think, I don't think there'll be any issue with that, but I mean, it was built in the '90s as a holding pond for water. Trees, so right now, we have, there's a lot of trees we're planting. So I mean, we are, we're taking down 32 trees. There's a fairly robust replacement requirement in the city of Wayzetta, so we're planting 125. So I mean, we've got a lot of trees that aren't going on Ferndale Ridge. I mean, we're, the intent is that pretty much along the entire wetland will be new trees. So I mean, there's a lot of trees we're planting. Ferndale Ridge, there's a condition that got added after the last meeting. We have every intent, there's an amenity plan, which we don't have to go take a look at. It's a requirement now, per Planning Commission condition, that that plan is done. So I mean, we- So, I mean, we intend to work very closely with Ferndale Ridge, make sure we're doing what they want us to do, you know, and then proceeding with that. So, that work will be done as part of this project, so. I guess that's really all I have. Staff's done a great job of going through this, so I guess if there's additional questions,
Council, any questions? Kathy?
Just a couple. In the discussion with the parking requirements, was there any talk about potential nurses, aides, or healthcare providers that would have to be at these units on a daily basis? And how do we account for those services? Because there's potential that that could happen there. So, that's, that's just a question. And then, now that I'm seeing the larger one, maybe you can help me with this, the articulation of the, I think it's the East Building, and it's the side elevation. It does look like two of the sections of the building are set back a little bit. You see, looking at the same as, that's up. Can you tell me how far back that's set? It looks like the middle part comes up just a little bit.
Yeah, I would guess two foot.
My concern is, it's really large, and I just want to make sure it's set back a little bit, so it's not just one long, large building.
Yeah, I would guess, just, just looking at the screen, I don't remember the exact number, but it's going to be, you know, two foot eight to three foot four, something in that range.
Okay, so just a little bit, not a large amount?
Yeah, I mean, it would be, like I said, in that range.
Moll, Zizlov, developer, thank you for your time and effort. I just wanted you to know one thing, that when you have retail spaces, and they're not on Lake Street, I've got other retail buildings in Wayzetta we've had for years and years. And then, when you have retail stores, if you're on Lake Street, there aren't any vacancies on Lake Street. If you put them within a complex, that's where you get into problems. If you try to have parking for retail, the only parking is underground, that's when you have trouble. It works for residents and office, but that's it. With my commercial space, the option either way. I may keep it and lease it out if someone doesn't want to buy it. I can be flexible. I've, I manage properties in Wayzetta, you know, I've been here 90 years or just about. So, I mean, we're very flexible. And West End of Lake Street is looking for more commercial, more people, and so we're excited about. I moved the building back 10 feet, and that cost 13,000, 15,000 square feet in rentable space. And if you take that plus the cost, it's over $20 million that I devaluated my property. I didn't think that the park dedication would be, but I thought they wanted something, so we did the park also. But we, we know Wayzetta, and we're excited about uplifting the West End of Lake Street and bringing people there for the residents. And with a setback, with the benches, the tables, the chairs, and the space for people, they're going to have a social area that they've never had before. That's why we're excited about the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
I better sit down, I would be trouble with my daughter.
Are there any other questions?
I have one. Mr. Schmidt, what happened to Edgbrook Court? I thought they had access to that walkway.
Edgewood Court still has access to that walkway. Or Ferndale Ridge, I mean. Ferndale Ridge, yes.
But I thought Edgbrook Court was also originally involved in that.
No, the only one that's ever had access was this project itself and then Ferndale Ridge.
Any other questions? I'll just make a comment that it's actually was very heartwarming to know that, that this project team actually listened to the residents, to the council, to the Planning Commission, and reflected those things seemingly without, you know, any debate. You just said, okay, that's what you want. And so, I'm happy to see that. I also note that there were no objections. We didn't get anything from anybody, did we? Usually, we see some, but we didn't see any here. So, that's also a testament to, to the project and the plant. So, with that, let me turn it over to Council for comments before we take a vote.
I'm going to make one more. And Mr. Schmidt knows that this is a very personal opinion. I absolutely love the design of the West Building, the colors, the exterior, and the elements that you're using. I personally have a hard time with the East Building. It feels a little out of place, perhaps like a building that wasn't remodeled. I personally would love to see all the white. I understand the intent of it was to break up the mass and to make it not feel as big. I think, in my professional opinion, it does the opposite. It actually attracts your eye to it. I know it's late in the 11th hour for you guys, but I would love to see it be all the white, the clean, the lake feel of the West End of the building versus the East being a whole different color, genre, just has a whole different feel. I just felt that I needed to voice that. Again, I know it's late in the hour, but I think the other building feels like it's been on the, in the city of Wayzetta for a long time. It feels like a lake resident. The other one, I'm just structured, I'm just, from design, can't quite see it, so. Thank you.
Other comments?
I agree.
Jeff?
I kind of agree. I agree with Councilman Iverson.
Molly?
I have comments on the application as a whole, but not necessarily the facade of the two buildings. I think, I thought it was quite clever to make them different. I recall that being a suggestion in a Planning Commission meeting quite some time ago for another applicant on Lake Street. And I, what a great idea, they don't all have to look exactly the same. So, to each their own. In regards to the, like I said, in the application more as a whole, I support this application. I think the applicant has put on a master class of how to come to the city and, with asks, go through the public process, work with staff, Planning Commission, just listen to feedback, be open. So, really, really well done. I have some comments about the flex spaces. Like you, Mayor Protem, I do not support changing those back to commercial only. I'd rather keep it the way it's presented to us. And I'm far less, or I'm far more optimistic with Mr. Zizlov and his team. Sounds like there's a, maybe a retailer in the family, but I agree with you guys. The variation of parking options on the street, below parking lot in the back, Lake Street address, I think, I think they're going to be desirable. I think they're a good size, too. Frankly, the vacancies on the other side of town are because of the size of the spaces. Those go for a minimum of 3,500 square feet, and it's just too big for an independent retailer. So, I look forward to seeing how you sell them, how you market them, and who opens up, so. Thank you.
Okay. Well, it's to me here, so before we take a vote, just a couple of comments. Like you said, everyone's got different opinions. I actually like the fact that you've got two different styles of building. To me, to my eye, one, even if it's really a nice design, that massive complex would just be huge. It just, to my eye, would look overwhelming, like it's just out of place, so. And I think this is too late in the stage to kind of rework the design. It is what it is. It's been through many hurdles in getting to this point, so I would not want us to push back and say, you got to come back to us again with a, with a new design. I'm also heartened by what I heard here about the push for commercial. My view was that it would be difficult, but apparently it's not as difficult as I may have thought, particularly when you differentiate retail versus commercial. And that's a nuance I hadn't really thought of. It sounds like that's really what you would like to do, and that actually complies with what we had wanted. But giving you the flexibility just in case, I think makes sense. And like I said, kudos to you for getting through all these hurdles, listening to everybody, and reflecting all the things that I'm aware of, that people asked for you to do without any pushback. So, I am also in favor of this. So, and question for a city attorney. Now that we have four council members up here, in case it's a tie vote, what occurs?
A tie vote would not result in an adoption or a council action. You need a majority of council for an action. So, three of, need three affirmative votes, as you would.
Three for this to pass?
Yes.
And if it was a tie vote, would we then have them come back until we have full council?
That's one of the procedural options, yes.
Is that something we need to determine today after the vote?
Let's hope we have a majority.
Okay.
Mayor Protem, the other thing I would say is, I think it's worth checking in with staff before you ask for a motion for an articulation of particularly adoption of the resolution. Staff's pointed out that the applicant has volunteered to make that additional contribution for an additional public benefit of the project. I think that should be amended to our, our resolution as permitted. I'd suggest as a new for, Romanet six, there on page 143 of the packet. And then also, I think it would be helpful to have clarification about these flex units, and that's Romanet four, that's a little IV, that the uses of those commercial and flex units in the PUD can either be residential or a commercial use as defined in the C4A zoning district. I don't know, Director Gelner, do you have any additional thoughts or clarifications on those two requests I would have, or?
On the second, I'll start with the second. The uses of commercials, that's number four here, uses of commercial and flex units in the PUD must comply with C4A zoning district. I would just include that residential in the, in the flex units are permitted by right with this PUD general plan, meaning they don't need to come back for any kind of public process to do residential within the flex.
Yeah, and that was my intention, too. So, just want to make that clear for the record.
Yes.
That this PUD would allow the applicant the option of making those units residential or commercial.
City Attorney, does your wording and, along with Director Gelner, still allow for the combo, the live slash work?
Director Gelner, is that permitted in C4A, or?
Yeah, I'd have to look at that. I'm happy to add that into this approval, just to be really clear. It wouldn't hurt.
I think the wording would be something like, those uses could be as Director Gelner articulated, one or the other, or both, or mixture of both.
I like that.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem, I would like to make another statement, since I only made a comment and didn't get to really talk about how I feel about the project. I would like to go on the record stating that my comment about the design of it was not intended to be reviewed, but just a comment. And so, I hope you understand that, because I got feedback from both you and Molly, and that is not the intent. And I think I clarified that with the applicant, that I knew it was in the 11th hour, and by no means, by no means, was I asking them to change that. And so, I just want clarification on that, on the record, that that is not my intent tonight. I think they have done a great job. I think they have listened to the residents. They went out of their way to make sure that their neighbors' voices and concerns were heard, and I thank you for that. I think it's a great application. I think giving you the flex is probably the right approach. But I, too, like Molly, believe that you probably will fill those commercial spaces. I think there's a need from residents down there. There's a lot of service options that could happen. And we have a lot of entrepreneurs in the area, so something unique's going to come up. And so, I am in support of this, and I just want to go on the record saying that, since I hadn't done that previously. So, thank you for all your hard work.
Councilmember Iverson, thank you for that clarification. I think that was very well stated. Thank you. So, we have, we have two motions we need to go through here? Is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so I've got the first one here. I'd like to have a motion for approval of the first reading of ordinance 830, approving the planned unit development general plan, residential shoreland planned unit development, conditional use permit, and zoning map amendment for Westway condominiums at 201 Lake Street East. Is that a separate option from the other resolution here? Is that it, or is?
Yes, Mayor Protem, so that would be, the first action step is to adopt that resolution as you read it, and staff would recommend you just amend that motion with the two conditions we noted earlier of the voluntary contribution. What was the amount of that contribution?
$220,000.
$220,000 to the city's park fund as an additional public benefit associated with the project, and then also the changes clarifying that those flex units could be residential, commercial, as permitted by C4A, or a mixture of both.
Okay, I'm not sure I could do justice in restating that.
If you just want to say that you accept that amendment to your motion that you've asked for, Mayor Protem, I think that'd be fine.
Okay, well, then I so accept that. So, may I have that motion from someone?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Are you opposed, or?
Yes, nay, whatever.
So, it looks like the, the motion passes three to one. And the second motion, I don't have it in front of me here, is it?
Should be on your screen, Mayor Protem.
And that's to adopt Resolution 47-2023.
I'm sorry, it's the lower one.
The lower one. To approve first reading of ordinance 830, amending the official zoning map of the city of Wayzetta to rezone 201 Lake Street East. Any discussion about that item? Hearing no discussion, I would accept the motion.
I'll make that motion, Mayor Protem.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So, motion, looks like it passes four zero?
That one passes, yeah. They both pass.
Very good. Okay, so, congratulations. Okay. And next item on the agenda is City Manager's Report, discussion items.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council members. I have just a brief update for you tonight. The first thing I want to do is plug a reminder for James J. Hill Days this weekend, that's September 8th, 10th, and, 8th, 9th, and 10th. The Wayzetta Chamber of Commerce has put in a lot of work to throw that event together, as well as a lot of work on our Public Works Department and public safety to make sure that that event happens. So, there'll be beach bash concerts Friday and Saturday night, and a full slew of events throughout the weekend, which can be found on the Chamber's website. I also want to plug a couple reminders for some other events happening in town later this month. The Fire Department Pancake Breakfast will be September 17th. There's also going to be an EV, electric vehicle ride and drive event on September 21st from 5:00 to 7:30 PM here at City Hall. I also want to shout out that we are searching for a volunteer, volunteer coordinator. So, that's coming out in our portal and has been in our weekly. We're really looking to bump up our volunteer efforts and looking for a volunteer in the community to help us do that, either encourage more volunteering, find new ways to make it fun, things like that. So, you can find more information about if you, you or someone you know is interested in helping volunteer efforts with the city, we're looking for an application for that by September 25th. So, you can go to our website, wayzetta.org, and search volunteer coordinator and find more information about that position. I also want to take this opportunity to remember some of our fallen officers in the Wayzetta Police Department. This time of year, we have kind of two sad anniversaries to recognize, so I want to take some time to do that. August 31st marks the anniversary of the passing of Sergeant JW Anderson, and September 8th marks the anniversary of the death of Officer Bill Matthews. So, I just want to call out those to make sure that, that we remember them and honor them and keep their families in our hearts. And that's all I've got.
Could I make a comment?
Sure.
Not on that, but back to the, I wanted to clarify something and have it on record, that the only reason I voted against this was because I did not agree with the flex spaces. I think they're going to go residential, and we're making a decision, as I said before. So, I do think the project is beautiful. We'll see how it works out. So I do think the project is beautiful, we'll see how it works out, and I wish you the best. I just hope I was not willing to give up on commercial at that end of Lake Street yet, and I see it, even if it doesn't sell for as much as a residential unit, I see it as a public benefit that they're there. So anyway, I wish you the best.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. Okay, we're at the last section of public forum. Is there anybody online or in the audience here that would like to address the council?
Mayor Protem, I have no one online.
Okay, hearing none, then I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
In a second, and, okay, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.